Ready?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Good afternoon now, 12:03. It is still Monday, January 6th, and this is a special school board meeting. Public hearing instructional materials. We already did the moment of silence and pledge in the first meeting, so if you guys are good with skipping on. And I don't think there's any public input. So, let's move right on into item 3.01. Ms. Bonda.
Good afternoon now. Good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon Superintendent and School Board members. We are pleased to be here this morning with what seems to be a hot topic this morning, but we're pleased to be here to provide to you an overview of the instructional materials recommendation for science and personal finance and money management adoption for next school year. I do have, you know her well, Kelly Dodd with me, our instructional materials and media manager who has led a lot of this work, so we'll be co-presenting together as we share with you today. Thinking about the mission of the school district, really as we began this journey with our instructional materials committee, we anchored the task in identifying the state-approved material that would best align to the mission and vision of Lake County schools. So that really served as our anchor. As you look on the next slide, we do have an overview of the overall Lake County instructional materials adoption schedule. And I wanted to take an opportunity to share with you kind of where we are and a roadmap of where we are headed. You can see highlighted there in yellow or in that gold color is the 2024-2025 adoption for both science K-12 and personal finance and money management. Important to note that when we adopt, the implementation is the following year. So obviously, we are here at 2024-2025, working through the adoption approval process. We would implement these materials in the subsequent year. There is a typo that slide was updated, but it didn't reflect here when it pulled up, that science, we are recommending a four-year adoption, and I will share a little bit more about that. Personal finance and money management would be a five-year adoption. As you know, and we've talked about in the past, we are one year behind the state instructional materials adoption. And that was done with intention. If you remember back a couple of years ago when we adopted math, some of, we had a little surprise at the end when we were prepared to order, and then some of the materials came back and they were, they actually did not make the state-approved list, left us in a place to kind of have to scramble, have some convenings again, and then make our purchases from there. We decided after that, we didn't want to put anyone in that situation again. We really want to ensure that we have state-approved materials in the hands of students and teachers to start each school year. So we delayed the adoption of social studies by one year. And that put us where we are now. So right now, the state is actually adopting ELA K-12, but our intent is to adopt ELA K-12 the following year, so '25-'26, and implement that the year after, the '26-'27 school year. The state, or House Bill 7004, has moved up the state requirements for sharing the approved list with us. That is good news, just because we won't kind of be waiting. We had some school, some districts still waited for the state-approved list when it came to science, and they were left waiting kind of, kind of late into the summer before implementing this year. So with the state timeline being pushed forward over the course of the next three years, we are hopeful to get back on cycle with the state-approved list. Our intention then is to combine math K-12 and what we call the kitchen sink adoption. It is the CTE world languages, because a lot of the CTE, that funding comes from Ms. Ellis's department and outside of the scope of the core instructional materials budget allocation. So that would be a good opportunity for us to combine adoption and get back on cycle with the state adoption process, hence the reason that we are looking at a four-year process. Do we have a question?
I got a question about the timeline. Because the one I'm noticing that is not on here is the intervention materials for math and reading. That's now on the state adoption list?
Yes. So intervention materials for K-3 ELA and K-4 math were added to the state adoption this year. The state is actually cycling through that process right now. We are at a place where, I had the opportunity to tag along with Mrs. Dodd at the instructional materials DOE meeting on August 2nd, and multiple districts at that time were asking, is it a requirement that we adopt? And the answer was a little bit unclear at that point. It was, it's a requirement that you provide interventions. However, it is, it is not a requirement of districts at this time that we actually adopt the intervention materials. Now that said, that puts us in an interesting spot. We did hear the same information at the instructional leadership conference with the state in December. However, knowing that the state is adopting right now, we are in a, in a place where both of our instructional materials, or intervention materials for K-3 ELA and for K-4 math are on the short bid list for the state right now. So what we intend to do is just monitor that closely, knowing that there are still some questions that districts across the state do have regarding intervention materials, particularly whether or not any additional funding would come to support that purchase. As of, as of December, what we did hear from the state was in terms of math, we should be looking out for a needs assessment from DOE to come our way for us to determine what needs we might have. And there are approximately $8 million in funds that are available to be spread out across the entire state to support intervention, the purchase of intervention materials as long as they are on that state-approved list. So it's a, it's, right now, it's a, we will wait and see. We are closely monitoring, and we're ensuring that we do have materials that are in line with the state-approved list. We also know that Lexia right now, which is our intervention material for K-3 ELA, is, is a three-year purchase.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when I was invited to attend those trainings on Lexia, that was one of the selling points of it at the time, was that this is going to be on the, on the state list, so it'll be good. But I think it was also explained in those meetings, though, that we would be adopting the intervention materials, and that public would have a chance at that point to be able to see these. And so I guess I'm, I guess I'm just wondering, is the state going to provide a definite answer, or are we just based on statute? And so my wondering, and I know the attorney has, I guess, left the room, but should he look at this? Because, you know, when I look at the state website, and it lists all these, all these adoptions, it lists that one, and on the very same page is a link to the statute that under, that talks about the entire adoption process involving public input and going through school board approval for that. And, and so I'm just wondering why this one wouldn't follow everything else on their website?
Yeah. I think we have that, that same wondering, which is a question that we have asked. I do know that DOE is kind of in the, in the middle of a transition of their director for instructional materials. However, all of the information that I believe Kelly has, has heard from her meetings and mine would indicate that it is not a requirement at this point.
But are there other school districts that are adopting this, that are adopting intervention materials?
I think you're aware of, of some that are and some that are not.
Okay. So I guess, I guess I, I don't know. I can't wait to hear what the state says.
So with all that said, for kids that need intervention, what are we doing right now?
Yes. So we do have the materials for students who need intervention in, so the statutory requirement, right, for substantial deficiency speaks to K-3 ELA. That core resource for intervention is Lexia. So we have Lexia Core 5 for any student needing intervention in ELA.
And who picked that? You, you guys?
A committee, a representative committee from across the district did.
Didn't need to be state-approved. So y'all just picked what was in the right?
Correct. It was, yes, it was selected prior to the adoption.
But now, now it's on their adoption list. So before, districts could just pick whatever, right?
Correct.
But now, now there's actually an adoption.
It's on a short bid list because it has not been, the state-approved list has not been released yet.
Right.
They're still working through their adoption schedule this year.
I just want to make sure because of bureaucracy, we were, that we were giving kids what they need.
Absolutely.
I know you guys would, I don't understand, but the public, as you're listening to this, is probably sitting back going, what are they doing?
Yes, and for K-4 math, the mathematics intervention resource is Curriculum Associates iReady.
Which would use that forever?
Yes.
Okay. Move forward.
All right.
You weren't going to ask any questions.
No.
You already have all the answers.
No, I don't actually.
This is a good place for questions. We figured on the, on that timeline, there might be some questions. So I'm going to transition us a little bit into the work of the committee, and we were so thankful to have such a great group of educators come together to share their passion for science and for personal finance and money management. And I wanted to anchor you in what anchored them during the process. We really made sure that our what as a collective committee was to be able during the committee selection process to review and to narrow our high-quality instructional materials for recommendation to the school board. So that's why we're here today. And we want to really ensure that we provide standards-based and high-quality instructional materials that are a strategic fit for Lake County School District, knowing that we do have some nuances of needs at each and every school across the district that might be a little bit different. But what is that high-quality material that is going to serve as our, our core? And you've probably noticed, we do have all of our CIA Adoption Committee members here. I do want to give them major kudos, first and foremost, to Kelly Dodd for her work as Instructional Materials Manager, really navigating and setting the stage for a successful timeline, keeping us on track during, during the process. And then, of course, to our curriculum managers, Beth Petty and Seth Edwards, both at the elementary and secondary level, who did a fantastic job, and Kathy McMurray, Sonya Blackstone, and Kristy Zubba, our program specialists, who really rolled up their sleeves to do the work. Kelly will give some individual shout-outs. We had participation from across the district, including our district departments and regionals, and we'd be remiss not to recognize them. But I'm going to turn it over to Kelly now, who's going to share with you the recommendations from each group.
Awesome. So happy to join you this afternoon. I'm going to start with talking about our rubric, specific to the K-12 science adoption. Our Lake County Schools K-12 Science Adoption Rubric aligns very closely with the Florida Department of Education rubric. It's designed to be easy to navigate while capturing the elements desired in our instructional materials and the best fit for Lake County schools. Our rubric contains three portions. We have the content, presentation, and learning features. First, we will provide an overview of the elementary school science adoption materials for recommendation. The Lake County Schools K-5 Science Adoption Committee included representatives from 22 of our elementary and K-8 schools, program specialists, and a parent. After reviewing the materials utilizing Lake County Rubric and based on the best fit for our district, the committee was able to narrow the elementary materials to two publishers for school and committee review, McGraw-Hill and Savis. I've, for years called it Savas, but evidently it's Savis. Of these two publishers, McGraw-Hill secured the recommendation with 87% of the vote. This chart prepared, prepared by McGraw-Hill captures the components included in the adoption package. Most notably, our bundle recommendation includes one-to-one consumable student editions as well as online access.
This might be a publisher question here, but I saw that one of the items on there, on that last slide there is something that's first-year only. Is that, is it designed to be consumable, and it's going to be recurring costs for us every year, or is that going to be something that the teachers are going to maintain in their classroom and keep overtime? It says Florida Science Literacy Essentials.
Oh, yes. So that was a question that they asked me.
Can you come up to the microphone, please? Thank you. I just, I just remember kind of getting caught on the wit and wisdom thing, that, you know, something was included the first year, and then it was a $400,000 recurring in costs.
I see. Yes. So hi, I am Lauren Beasley. I am your local McGraw-Hill representative, here to answer that question. And I did talk to both Kelly and Lane about this, so they were prepared to answer it as well. But the science literacy essentials, although it could be used as a consumable, it is the textbook at a one-to-two grade level lower Lexile level to help support some of the intervention strategies that you might need in your K, so that is across K-8. The only reason it comes first-year only is I recommend to my districts not to use it as a consumable, to have teachers keep that on hand so they can reuse that specific, even though it is a consumable, just use it for those learners who are going to need that extra reading support year after year.
So it looks consumable, but we'll have to advise our teachers, don't treat it as such?
And again, that would be the communication. That's my recommendation. You don't have to do that, but that's, that's how most districts.
And it's not provided for kindergarten versus second grade level. I heard you say it's for.
It starts third grade, yes. So it starts at third grade through eighth grade that we offer the science literacy essentials.
Are the science literacy essentials not required for kindergarten through second grade?
For kindergarten specifically, we just don't have a text that's below grade level, like it starts at kindergarten. And first and second, it's just usually not as developmentally appropriate.
What's not developmentally?
So what I will say is the literacy essentials does come for third through eighth grade digitally, always. So you will always have the digital access if we need to put them on the device to access the lower Lexile level. This is just what you're receiving in print at the one-to-four ratio.
What did you say? It's not developmentally appropriate. What's not developmentally appropriate?
We just, as a company, we just don't offer the science literacy essentials below third grade.
Like the content's not developmentally appropriate, or?
Right. That's when like, I'm so confused. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. When I'm saying that, I'm saying, when I'm thinking from like, reading perspective, because in K-2, you are learning to read. Third grade is when we're starting to read to learn, if that makes sense. So that's when we start, I mean, we're doing that throughout, but that's, that's our company, I'm sorry, that's why we start the literacy essentials at third grade.
Okay.
I apologize for making that confusing.
So how much lower is the Lexile?
I don't have the numbers on hand with me, but I can get that to Kelly and Lane for you, because there are different ranges for what the grade level, it, grade level bands are, and then what the lower Lexile level is.
Okay.
Yeah, I can share that as a follow-up.
Thank you.
Stay right there, because I have a question for you. Because this one, I think, is in.
In line with it?
Willhouse with where we're going.
Of course.
You were in the room when you heard my concern, or my statement about digital versus killing trees. What is the trend that you see as the rep for McGraw? Are y'all moving more digital?
Yeah, so we offer everything digitally, of course. Typically, what I find is K-5 and sometimes in K-8, we still like to have the print in front of them. I do have more and more districts in high school moving to digital only, but again, that's district preference. That is preference of, you know, the instructional materials, it's preference of what we have available, one-to-one, and all those different things. So there's a lot of factors that play into it, but that is the trend I have seen in my, working with other districts as well.
And, and with that trend, does it help with the shortfall that we have allocated to buy books? In other words, is it less expensive because it's digital and it can be reproduced?
Yeah, of course, because if you were to go digital only, yes, of course, it would be cheaper because there isn't the cost of textbooks. But again, it comes down to what do the teachers need to have in front of them? What do the students need? And, you know, what the recommendation is from the committees who've, who've spent the time reviewing.
I think they have a slide later on that's going to show us the breakdown of digital versus print.
In this?
Yes. To, to your point, though.
Okay. But I wanted to hear it from manufacturer.
But I think for us, this isn't for you guys, for you guys, but I think for us in that scope of the audit, if they are in digital, if we get, we're giving them both, obviously in K-5, the print and the digital, and we're finding that they're printing that digital piece off, like what, that's an additional cost above and beyond, right? So I think that would be important for us to consider in the audit. And it would be specific, so they wouldn't have questions about what we mean by that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
We are thrilled that Lauren was able to join us today, and it's actually her first day back from maternity leave, so.
Congrats.
Thank you, thank you, from McGraw-Hill. All right, the next slide, we have some comments from our elementary adoption committee. These comments were included in the rubrics that we collected from our committee members. Multiple committee members emphasize strengths, highlighting the inclusion of nature of science benchmarks throughout the text, as well as ease, ease of use within the digital platform. It's compatible with Google Classroom, and the PowerPoints are editable. All right, shifting gears to middle school. Our six through eight middle school adoption committee included representatives from nine of our middle and K-8 schools, program specialists, and a parent. After reviewing the materials and utilizing the Lake County Rubric and based on the best fit for our district, the committee was able to narrow the middle school materials to these three publishers for school and committee review, Discovery Science, McGraw-Hill, and Of those three publishers, McGraw-Hill secured the recommendation with 71% of the vote. Once again, this chart prepared by McGraw-Hill captures the components included in the adoption package. Most notably, our bundle recommendation includes class sets of the printed materials and digital access for all students. Here are a few of our comments.
Kelly, if I can ask one question on that one, this one's going to be for Lauren. On the, can you go back one slide, please?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you. So the difference on this one is at the top in that student bundle, this one says the Florida Science Student Digital License, and the last one was a five-year subscription, I think, if I'm looking at the right thing in the packet. It just seems like, that came up earlier. So like, are we paying for the electronic copy on an annual subscription basis, or does it vary by product? It just, the wording's different there than the last one, so I just look at that timeframe.
And I apologize for the confusing wording, but no, when you buy the digital, typically you buy, you purchase upfront, and then it lasts for the five years of the adoption, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. These are the comments that we've collected on our rubric from our middle school committee. Multiple committee members emphasize strengths, highlighting the inclusion of nature of science benchmarks once again throughout the text, as well as various teacher and student support resources. Next, we will provide an overview of the high school science adoption materials for Our nine through 12 high school adoption committee included 14 representatives from nine of our high schools, program specialists and parents, two of them. This Lake County Schools graphic captures the four core science requirements for our high school students. These courses include environmental science, Biology I, Chemistry, and Physics.
Just a quick physics question. Do you know if all our schools are offering physics now, or are they still struggling on enrollment in some places?
I would have to check course scheduling. I'm not certain on that. Sonya, do you know?
I don't think all high schools have physics yet, but I do know that a lot of them are trying to get.
And so outside of physics, they would, they would just, there are other science elective courses that they could take.
Yeah.
My other question is on Biology and just what's going on across the district, just from my own kids' experience, that if they were to take Biology as a ninth grader, an AP route was not possible, because those two courses were tied together, and if you took honors by itself, you couldn't later go back and get the AP. Has that been fixed across schools?
Maybe.
And likewise, that kind of ties into Chemistry too, because I know that those were also tied together. And, and so, you know, just personally speaking, I have a kid in Chemistry now, wondering if AP is going to even be an option, because he didn't do the double block of both.
Yes. So what we, we said they couldn't take them both at the same time anymore, like fifth period, honors biology, sixth period, AP biology, right? So we said, we're not double-blocking that way. What one school continues to do, I believe it was one school, they put honors biology, fifth and sixth period, first semester. So they're satisfying honors biology first, and then AP biology, fifth and sixth period, second semester.
So you start to have two periods in your schedule.
So they didn't block it in a way that one is not before the other. AP, or honors bio is before AP bio.
I don't think that really fixes it, does it? I don't think that really fixes the problem, because you're still doing the two courses in one year.
You're still doing the two courses in one year.
And so.
The grading is separated, which was one of the issues that we were trying to mitigate with the fifth period, one course, sixth period, the other course. So that is what happened this year.
Okay.
After the committee's narrowing to two publishers for committee and school review, McGraw-Hill secured the environmental science vote with a recommendation of 54%. This is environmental science and honors, and I just want to note that in the, in the event that we do purchase these materials, we'd be purchasing the honors materials, which includes the, the regular standards and benchmarks as well as the honors benchmarks. For Biology I and honors, the committee was able to narrow to three publishers for committee and school review. Of those three, McGraw-Hill secured the recommendation with 77% of the vote.
I wonder you're here. Y'all smoking?
The adoption committee representatives reviewing Chemistry I and honors materials were able to narrow to two publishers for committee and school recommendation. Of those two publishers, McGraw-Hill secured the recommendation with 78% of the vote. After the committee's narrowing to two publishers for committee and school review, McGraw-Hill secured the Physics I and Physics I honors recommendation with 80% of the vote.
Is that the same where you'll be doing the Physics honors book?
Yes. Same thing with Chemistry.
Okay.
For Anatomy and Physiology, the committee was able to narrow to three publishers for committee and school review. Of those three, McGraw-Hill secured the recommendation with 50% of the vote. The adoption committee representatives reviewing Marine Science I materials were able to narrow to two publishers for school and committee recommendation. Of those two publishers, McGraw-Hill secured the recommendation with 90% of the vote. McGraw-Hill was the only publisher on the state list on or before September 27, 2024 for these two courses, Earth Space Science and Honors and Physical Science and Honors. The committee affirms the recommendation of these materials. This chart prepared by McGraw-Hill captures the components included in the adoption packages for these various high school courses. Most notably, our bundle recommendation includes class sets of printed materials and digital access for all students. These comments were included in the rubrics collected by our committee members. Multiple committee members emphasize strengths, highlighting the inclusion of various resources for teacher and student support. Our high school science adoption committee reviewed two publishers for the Forensic Science I course. Cengage secured the recommendation with 100% of the vote. Here are some of the comments they shared with us, the committee. The Cengage Forensic Science package includes print and digital student resources. In addition to our K-12 science adoption this year, we also reviewed personal finance and money management materials recommendations for the school board. The PFMM adoption is unlike science, as the state list has not been released. And as a result, our adoption committee recommended a ranked list instead of a specific publisher and resource for our school board consideration and approval. This may look familiar. Our Lake County Schools Personal Finance and Money Management Adoption Rubric aligns closely with Florida's Department of Education Adoption Rubrics. This rubric is designed to be easy to navigate while capturing the elements desired in our instructional materials as a good fit, best fit for Lake County schools. Our rubric includes three sections, the content, presentation, and learning features.
Can I ask a question? Back to personal finance and money management. And in this one, McGraw-Hill came in second by 58 to 61 points. Is there any advantage, I guess it's back to you, is there an advantage if we buy, the more material we buy, the better the pricing could be, or is there no consideration for that?
That's a great question. Typically, how we operate is everything is approved through the state to keep it consistent across and for all districts, that everyone's paying the exact same price. That's always something I could possibly run up to my manager, but I have a feeling since it's state-adopted and on the list, there's not much wiggle room there.
If it's state-adopted and on the list, and we pay this price, would there be a rebate or consideration that's not on the state? Because what I've been told is state gives you, there's a state allocation, this is for books, by the way, some of their commodities.
Yeah.
And doesn't prevent the vendor from giving an additional discount from the state price?
That's above my pay grade, but I can definitely follow up with Kelly and Lane in the event that that's.
That would be interesting.
Yeah, of course.
How much are we spending on that?
I think we have a slide coming up that, well, we'll capture that. Is that okay, Mr. Mathais? Want to get to that? You want me to skip to that?
Well, no, skip to that. You don't have to, I'm just trying to give her the number.
Okay, yeah. There it is, back. All right, Mr. Mathais, this is the Personal Finance and Money Management.
So it's $300,000, is that right?
Plus the 67.
Plus the 67.
Plus 67, so 371, 371,000?
Okay.
So that's the discussion. Would you call your manager?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, the Lake County Schools Personal Finance and Money Management Adoption Committee included representatives from seven of our high schools and a program specialist. Our Personal Finance and Money Management Adoption Committee was able to narrow the materials for school and committee consideration to five. Additionally, the committee was able to rank the top three materials for our school board recommendation. The Cengage materials received the top ranking, as Cengage earned the most first-place votes as well as the greatest number of points reflected in the committee's resource ranking. As a, as a result, Cengage is the committee's. result, Cengage is the committee's top recommendation for personal finance and money management. And in the event that Cengage's personal finance and money management adoption materials do not secure a spot on the state-approved list, our recommendation would be to include future committee deliberation utilizing the alignment provided by the state, and would be specific to the narrowed McGraw-Hill and Ramsey materials if both are approved. So, Mr. Mathias, it's actually Cengage that received the top ranking there?
Mm-hmm.
Not McGraw-Hill?
No, do I do that?
Okay.
That's what I was saying.
I'm sorry, yeah.
If we consider it, though.
If we went to our second choice or a second first.
I understand.
Which it sounds like it may go to second choice anyway.
But McGraw-Hill, yeah, they were the, they weren't the second choice, were they? I mean, I see 49 points, but six first-place votes, which doesn't have a.
They got the fewest first place, but overall.
Because they might have been somebody's second or third choice.
So it was.
Points for first, and second, and third. It's like college football rankings.
The committee ranked all five of the materials, and like, their, their first pick was worth five points, their second pick was worth four points, second, third pick was worth three points, fourth pick was worth two points, fifth pick was worth one points. That's how we came up with the amount of points there for the ranking. The number of first-place votes was like, if I had to pick one material that I was recommending, like a traditional adoption, that would be the number of first-place votes.
So you would rank the Ramsey Solutions third, based on that, what you just told me?
So our recommendation is actually to, is to go with our first recommendation of Cengage, and then should they, should they not be approved, or should the board not approve the recommendation of Cengage?
I heard you say that.
Yep, we would go back, so that we can revote, because it was a little, it was just a little wonky that way. We were like, wait, they're showing up, Lampeau's showing up with six first-place votes, but truly, most of the schools selected McGraw-Hill as their second choice. So it was just a little unusual in the way that presented.
Okay, thank you. It just took me a minute, and as you were talking, I'm like, okay, I got it.
All right. So to speak to the fiscal impact, we've broken it down for you by grade band, and then I've kind of put the pieces together and consolidated all of the fiscal impact towards the end of the slides. So thinking about the elementary school fiscal impact here, is that not showing the bottom? It's not.
It's weird.
Yeah, I apologize. We're, you're missing the bottom of that slide, so I will just speak to it. But including the items that Kelly had referenced before, which are included in the core bundle and package, for K through five, the total fiscal impact, and this is an estimate, knowing that we're doing the best we can with the numbers that we have right now, based on student enrollment and, and teachers, knowing that, of course, things are going to change. We do have an additional school opening, so that will impact teacher additions and things of that nature. We've tried to account for all of that, but our K-5 total is looking to be roughly $1,184,973.58.
Is that Science Digital Teacher Edition, the four-year subscription, four or five? I know she referenced five before.
Four.
It's four. Why is there, why is there a one-year difference?
What do you mean by a difference?
Why, I thought you said that, what is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I think I originally said five-year, because most schools purchased in, not most, certain amount purchased in the first year, so they are pying for this year and the next four. But their choice is actually very smart. They waited for the list, because the list didn't come out until July 9th. So getting all the schools their books before school started after July was very challenging. But they only need four years, because then they'll be back on the science schedule. Yes.
Thank you.
So I applaud it.
And the state has now created law that the list comes out, okay.
Close earlier and earlier, over the next two years. We are so thankful for that, for sure. So then, as we switch to the 68 fiscal impact, we did break this down for comprehensive science I through III to show you the cost projections for various levels of access. So you'll see the first column indicates the one-to-one print and digital access. The second column is for class set, print and digital. Kelly's mentioned that that is the recommendation of the committee, after speaking to them about what would be the preference of, of teachers, thinking you're in the work, you have students in your classrooms, what would you need to utilize to support instruction in your classroom? The committee recommendation came back at the class set, print, and digital. And then we did include that digital access component only, Mr. Mathias. I think that'll help just to answer your question with regard to if we were only to purchase digital.
So that would be 773,000 if we just bought digital?
Correct, yes, sir.
Versus a million to book and digital.
But you're recommending a class set, so it wouldn't be.
The class set, it would be.
You're going to utilize the consumables as non-consumables.
As non-consumables.
Correct. So then that would go back to the question about printing. So if they're using that, and then they get, like, what's that cost going to change to if we account for the amount of printing that might take place, might?
I misunderstood where you were going with that. I was just saying, you wouldn't have the shipping cost of consumables with the class set, because you only buy it the one year.
That's true.
That was all, but you were going a different direction, sir.
So have y'all ever had the conversation with, again, kids today, they do everything on their phones or on their tablets? Have we really considered just going digital, or no?
I think it's definitely been a consideration that has been explored. And I think we, from what we see and the feedback that we have, and this kind of aligns with the feedback that you provided as well, really thinking about K through five, they tend to utilize more of the print resources.
I totally agree with that.
But six and beyond, especially in our high school, we do tend to see more digital use, where the students have their Chromebooks, they're up, they're, they're in the materials. We are responsible for still being able to provide the print resources for any student who might have an accommodation or a need that indicates that they need a paper copy, but we really rely on the voices of, of the teachers. In this case, the committee, including the parents, to provide the recommendation to you. But it is something that, that we have considered, for sure.
I think just from a parental side of things, there's the screen time component associated with that. Kids are already on their screen so much today, and I think the legislature has even batted this one around a little bit, is are they going to put in a rule in place of limiting the amount of screen time available in schools? I guess if you went digital only, we may or may not be in compliance with that, right? If, if that were ever to come to pass?
Or they would have other materials that would be brought in.
Right, that's. So, so in the committee recommendation, we don't get a book for every kid. We just get one class set. So there's a physical copy. So the internet is down that day, science still happens. So, so that, and that, this is over the course of four years, right? So, so we're talking the difference is 200, 300,000 divided by four, so.
That's correct.
It's 400 grand, no matter how you cut.
The one we're selling 600.
I'm certainly in favor of the class set. I agree with Ms. Mathias on scaling back over time, but still think, we certainly don't need one-to-one. I don't think that's necessary at the sixth, the eighth, or above level today. But I think for the foreseeable future, a class set would make sense in the scaling back over time, as trends keep doing what they're doing, or if we're actually using the books, which I think we'll keep getting it too. So I agree with that recommendation.
Are these, are these texts available offline to the students when they go home? Or do they need the internet connection for the digital access?
I would say they probably know the answer, but yes, they, so we have the McGraw-Hill portal, K-12 portal app, so they can actually use it for middle school social studies as well at this time. But yes, for the K-12, you can access it, you just have to download. You can either download the whole book, which takes up a lot of storage, or we typically recommend in like middle school and high school, just downloading chapter or unit at a time. That way they can still access it. But yeah, anything they do on the app at home, or on the bus, or wherever they're going, even if they don't have Wi-Fi, it saves their work, it just won't sync back up until they're connected back to Wi-Fi.
Certainly, I'm thinking about kids who might not have internet access at home.
Exactly.
And we tell them, your materials are digital only.
Right.
You know what that, what that could do.
So they could still interact with it on their phone, or on like iPads. The only thing is, I do not believe at this time it works with a Chromebook. It would have to be like, an Apple. Well, it, it works on any app-enabled device. So I'm not as familiar with Chromebooks. Maybe you can download an app on the Chromebook? That's what I'm unsure of.
Mr. Weeks?
Now we're like, now we're calling all the people.
Or, or could we download where the kids could have access?
And with Wi-Fi, right.
So, in my understanding, I'd have to look and see, like, on the Chromebook, I will say, I'll reiterate with the publisher in the room, the Chromebook is used in like, everything. But advise your company to get with it. However, with that, hey, nobody wants an iPad.
It also keeps him up at night.
It does.
McGraw-Hill K-12, right? Like, every adoption was McGraw-Hill. So that is a huge concern, especially with this conversation.
Yeah.
So with Wi-Fi, you can access the materials.
It works with the Wi-Fi.
The question at hand is, can we get digitally, since she just said she thought it wasn't available to Chrome?
Yeah.
Even through like, one of our portals.
There may be a chance, like, the Chromebook is kind of blurred in its functionality in the last little bit. There is a Play Store which has apps to it. So we probably would have a conversation with their tech folks to reach out and see, would it be something that could be downloaded? We've, we've been experimenting with downloading apps on Chromebooks, and it seems to work just pretty fine. And so that would be a conversation, like, if it works on a Chrome tablet, we probably would have some of that cross-functionality. It's something we could investigate.
But at the very least, though, kid goes home, they have no internet. We've got a class set of books, so we probably have a book they can take with them home.
But, but, and I, and you guys are laughing, like, only if they don't have internet. I have internet, it works about half the time. Where I live is not, we have a hamster that runs on a wheel, and I'm not kidding you, like, you should hear the discussion about lag time when there's Fortnite and cellphones on at the same time. And so I'm telling you that because I'm, I think we have students that would fall into a poverty level that don't have internet at home. And I, I don't have internet and wouldn't even fit that demographic, so we're making assumptions here. The second thing I will tell you, and I totally forgot what I was going to say, oh, the book's coming home. Some schools don't let them take the books home when there's only a class set. So 1,000%, I have been told by administrators, no, they can't take the book home. Like, what? Why can't, so I purchased my own book, so that the kids can have it at home, particularly my one that struggles with reading. So I just, I hear these conversations, but I do think we're forgetting a demographic of users that require support.
But what I heard was, you could download a chapter at a time.
We have to do that. We just have to be really diligent about that. Yes, there are workarounds. I just feel like we have to be diligent. I'm literally picturing Jace Luke, so I'll throw him out there. He'll appreciate that. Thank God that they're not really watching board members at this grade level. But he, you know, for him to do the homework and to remember to plug the Chromebook in, those are big things for him. We're excited about that, and he's going to be an independent gray husband. Promise you that. However, to remind him to download the, the chapter beforehand, so sure, ensure that he has it, because the only thing he's bringing home is Chromebook. That's where all of his homework is being done right now. That's where my, like, my, I'm with you. My alarm bells went off hugely, because our internet stinks, and I got a young man in my house, and I'm trying to grow responsibility toward, and he might not have that access.
Yeah, like I said, we can reach out to you.
Starlink, by the way.
Right, yeah.
They don't have it in my area.
Starlink satellite, everybody has it.
Oh, I'm going to check it out.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm checking it out. I'm writing it down. Sorry.
So I have a question. How are we going to accommodate those students, say, your ESC kids, who, whose parents will call up and ask for their own book that stays at home? How, are they in this mix with cost, or how does that work?
Essentially, they would be captured within the class set that was provided. So we may have to purchase some supplemental hard copy, hard texts in order, if they needed something that then would go home with them and was truly assigned to them.
So a class set is 25 or 30?
But even still in that classroom, some kids might be looking at the book on their Chromebook, and some kids might be looking at it physically, right?
Yeah.
That's possible.
But I mean, these, it's not uncommon for ESC kids' parents to say, sometimes it's even included in the IEP, that they get to have a set of books at home. So I just want to know, is.
Yes, and we are required to provide that, absolutely.
Reflective of them, or, because I know you can't know how many there are. Or is this going to cause it to go up more?
It would depend on the need of, of the individual students beyond.
But we would provide it.
We, absolutely. We are required to provide it. So, yes, ma'am, yes. And I did, I did not intend to come across as insensitive to the needs of any of our students at home. The, I think the distinction that I was trying to make was just, when our students are at school on their Chromebook, as long as we have internet, then the digital access would not be a concern. We certainly do have the, the need for the at-home piece that we would have to prepare for.
And I think everything we've discussed that's a problem is, has a workaround. I mean, by all means, you just tell them, they need to be able to take the book home if they need, I mean, that's, but, but sometimes it doesn't happen. It just seems.
That's true.
But that's sort of like, too.
Yeah, it is.
They don't bring the book.
That's true. A thousand percent. I've experienced that too, Mr. Mathias.
All right. So let's look at 912 and the fiscal impact here. Of course, same setup. However, this list is a lot longer, because you have your, what are considered more of the core courses, plus the electives. We did highlight the same column of class set plus the digital, class at print, plus the digital access. That is the recommendation as well for our high school committee. And that then total would reflect $1,036,960.31 for nine through 12.
So this, this just speaks about how complicated your job is here, because now, if we're talking about all these elective science courses, how do you know, over a four-year period, four years from now, there'll be this number of kids in environmental science, but they might gravitate towards marine science, but now these kids might take anatomy and physiology instead, or now this one school decides to roll out marine science, who didn't have marine science previously? Do we end up with a lot of unused licenses, or then having to buy more in another sub, another one of these science courses, or, these are all McGraw-Hill. Is there a way just to bucket the number of science licenses and say, it doesn't matter whether your kid, kid takes earth science or marine science?
That would be wonderful. At the time, that's not an option. Again, that is definitely a question that is above my pay grade, but these are all concerns that we can then follow up with. And I, you know, if that's something that becomes available in the future, you will be the first to find out.
I get, frankly, it wouldn't be good.
These questions, so that you.
That would, yes.
I got it. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's really hard to predict four years from now what schools are going to do, you know, because we had a school that last year decided to offer psychology for a year.
Psychology, yes, sir.
Or, people keep signing on for sign language randomly outside of our adoption period. You know, the schools, you know, and maybe in as leadership changes, courses kind of change a little bit, or student interest change. It's just a lot of science courses that have to predict.
No, it is. And what I will say, I do have some districts who, they've gone through the process and they've adopted, but say, this might not be the case here, but say, we've adopted physical science, but we don't have any schools currently teaching it. You still go through the process. You don't necessarily have to buy it now, but you have said to the state, like, this is what's approved if it becomes available. But yes, I do know the numbers and all of that can be very challenging.
In three years, we might not have, you know, like, 10 kids taking it, and we've just, you know, paid $37,000.
To have 100 licenses, right.
And we don't need, you know, 100, okay.
Yeah. That is definitely a puzzle that annually Mrs. Dodd works through, along with Iliana Rosado. Iliana is our amazing inventory assistant, and they start that work early in, in March, to be able to plan ahead. But it is, it's, it's a moving target to some extent, so.
The solution is what Mr. Dodd came up with, you have a bucket, you just draw from. I think that's brilliant.
Well, okay, in, in all fairness, I, I heard this presentation, and, and it wasn't my own idea, but I said, it's brilliant, and I'm going to pass it off as mine own. Anyway.
What a guy. I guess you're also like a guilt-ridden guy.
Leave me taking credit for this. No, we have some very talented staff members who came up with that idea. That is absolutely brilliant.
All right. So then, looking ahead, I know we did pull this slide up before, but the recommendation for personal finance and money management would be the hardbound print student text, the five-year digital access, and a consumable activity guide. The materials, the resources that are available for this just look a little bit different. And thinking about the longevity of these resources for five years of adoption in PFMM, we, we basically presented the committee recommendation here of the premium bundle with the supplemental additional student workbooks, knowing, and the reason for that is because it is a semester-long course, knowing that we would need the workbooks for the second semester.
I, I don't have a lot of comments left, but I gotta, I gotta just throw this one out, not specific to textbook adoption, but just wondering about, because this is a semester-long course, it's really challenging for high schools to figure out what pairs with it, because there are very few other semester-long electives. And so I know of kids who are taking this course, who are now forced into like basketball or something, because it's the only semester-long course available. And some of these kids have zero interest in taking basketball, but, you know, because of the lack of semester-long electives. Any talk on how we fix that and create some more options for kids?
So we do have some CIA recommendations. We do have a recommended pairing. I can't recall them off the top of my head. I might need an assist from either Christie or Mr. Edwards, but we do have recommended pairings that have been established. Of course, some of the courses that were going to be eligible to meet the material, the requirement, the point-five requirement, or the PFMM requirement for the state, kind of sunset. So we had courses that went off of the course directory, and then courses that came on. So knowing that, we had to kind of wait and see what that was going to look like from the state. And what are the pairings? Do we have them?
It's been a really long time since I've looked at them, but I will tell you, there's actually quite a few social studies half-credit courses out there in the course directory. We just don't offer them.
I see. Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing, you know, now, is this is really rolling out, and everybody's going to have to take it, you know, if, what, what kids have the option to pair with.
What is happening right now at our two high schools that do currently offer personal finance and money management is they're either pairing it with some half-credit elective, or some schools are looking at pairing it with American government in their freshman, in their freshman year. Some schools are trying to keep the personal finance. Some schools are trying to keep the personal finance money management course in the senior year, which is my personal preference, because quite frankly, freshmen don't care about personal finance. If you're not old enough to drive a car or have a job, why would you care about those things? I think it's really better as a senior-level course, but that's just my personal opinion. We've got a lot of different plates.
Yeah, I see. Okay.
So, thinking about the overall K-12 fiscal impact for science at all three grade bands plus our PFMM adoption, as well as shipping, which is just an estimate, this might be an overestimate, however, we'd rather cushion that. But the final cost just for our science K-12 adoption, based on the recommendations provided, and PFMM would be $3,953,340.57. And then, we wanted you to be able to see that in the scope of the bigger picture of our budget. So, all of those proposed adoption, the fiscal impact is included in that first row there under K-12 adoption, so that's your 3.95 million. And then, we also have recurring expenses that occur each year. I think they've kind of all come up in, at one point or another in conversation this morning. Gap year, knowing that when we are out of adoption, we are able to purchase, but we have to purchase in gap. And we also have our consumable shipping projections, that is a cost that we have to plan for annually, as well as growth and new allocations. If we have a new school opening, which we've had, we of course need to, although maybe we don't have more students in those cases, we do sometimes and often have additional teachers that are brought onboard at that point. And then, we also have a psychology annual cost, I know that one came up as well, and the Wilson Resources and Support are our resources that were not included as part of a bundle package for ELA back, I think prior to either one of us here. These resources then are an annual cost to the district until we adopt ELA again, and implement ELA. We also do have that carryover that Mr. Ward spoke to, this is a rough projection of our carryover amount, so our final projected budget impact then for the adoption and instructional materials budget for next year would be $3,688,841, roughly.
And how much was in the instructional materials line forecasted for this? A little bit short of that, right? So, we just make up the rest with general fund?
So, it's about $3 million, Mr. Ward, that we.
Well, a half. That's what we've done with it for the new allocation.
For the new.
So, a half-million-dollar implication from general fund.
Which, if you went digital only, is 400K savings.
Is that up? Go ahead. So, thinking about next steps, obviously, I know certainly there's conversation and questions regarding the budget, but we did want you to have a clear picture of what is to come. So, the January 13th would be our next stop on this journey with our school board voting, where the recommended materials would be considered for approval by the school board, and January 14th, then, we would publish our objection timeline. That is a 30 calendar-day window where the objection would be published and available for any resident or stakeholder who would like to, or consider an objection to the materials if they so choose. And then, looking ahead, we would, you know, pending, knock on wood, no objections, we would move forth with purchasing then beginning in April.
For one.
Beginning in April. We do have a couple of links that we've contained in the slide deck as well, just to the overall timeline, the PFMM timeline as well as science, and that petition to object document, so you can just take a peek at the process for objection. So, what questions do you have for us that we can assist in answering?
My question is, do we have the excess money in the general fund, or are you going to ask us to cut materials?
Can you go back to that timeline slide?
Absolutely.
Because it's not in the.
Oh, in the slide deck, yes, sir.
So, sorry to answer Ms. Luke's question, do we have sufficient fund balance to cover that one-time cost? Yes, we do. I think my concern is more about the following year, which is going to be a much larger adoption process, and I think last time, the additional funding was over $7 million, and that's a large commitment.
Well, to your point, there was $1.5 million that was rolled forward, so this one would be even way farther out of our budget.
Yes.
That's true.
Yes.
I don't know that there's not merit to, I know we said class, a class set in six through 12, but would it be like 10 per teacher? What would be the decrease in cost there? Or if you do the audit and you determine, I mean, the audit's not going to turn around in time for us to make a decision here, but that would certainly be helpful for ELA, but I also think ELA is a little bit different than science, so there's lots of considerations. But if they had 10 in a classroom, that you could satisfy ESE needs, that you could satisfy parent requests and purchase more, I don't know what the cost.
I think it makes sense as you get higher at the six through eight level, for example, probably having a full class set and kind of weaning off over time, and the nine through 12, maybe looking at a 10 per class or whatever it might be, makes a lot of sense.
Especially the ones that don't use them at all.
Right.
I'm having a hard time understanding what a class set is versus.
Like, it's usually 25 or 30.
And you've got the same set of books, you're just using the same books for each class during the day. They don't go home. They don't typically go home, because you need that same set of 25 books for the next class that comes in.
So, it's not a specific, well, it is specific, 25.
Well, what I was going to say is, so because the middle, so we don't technically offer like a class set discount for middle school because it's set to be a consumable. So, all you would be doing is picking how many you want per teacher.
Right.
So, if you want to pick 30 per teacher or 10 per teacher, you totally can. The only thing I will say is, in high school, we do typically, and I would have to check every single course, have class set options, which sometimes makes it cheaper to buy like the actual class set. But same thing, if you chose to just buy 10 or 15 per teacher, you certainly can, like, we can make a package that fits Lake County. I'm just of the ones that we have like pre-made, if you will, we don't have, you know.
I thought you said earlier, the prices were published on the department.
Yes, they are, yeah.
But you just said you get a discount.
No, I was.
If you purchase a class set. Did you not just say that?
It's on, that's what's state-approved.
Okay.
Like, instead of buying one-to-one, it just, if you just choose the class set model, but that's the same across all districts.
Okay.
So, that's not anything like new, that's, yes, everything that I'm saying is published and.
At the end of the day, a book has a price to it, so if I wanted to buy three, I can buy three.
Right.
Correct.
And that's published.
Yeah, yes.
The price may just be more than it would be for the bundle rate of what you're looking on an individual book.
Correct.
Yeah, I think you can buy from Amazon.
But you can buy any of the texts à la carte, yes.
Yeah, Frank never looked really high.
I think there are a lot of rules about having to use the textbook depository.
Florida School.
And so, that kind of locks you into their.
Oh, you mean, are you for the Amazon comment, is that what you're just saying?
Yeah.
I was only commenting about the price.
You're not, you're not, right? We could buy a house with the cost of it, that's what we were doing.
We could drive, where is the suppository at?
No, they don't want you to pick it up.
Depository.
Depository.
I know where the suppository is.
Every corner. But I think there was that time where we were like, no, we'll come and pick it up because we were nervous we weren't going to get books in time, and they would not let us do that, is that right?
That's right, we can just go pick them up.
But they're in like Tallahassee?
I want to say there's Tampa or.
Here in Jacksonville.
Jacksonville.